All right, I'd like to call tonight's council meeting to order and ask for a roll call and the city clerk's report on posting the agenda.
Councilmember Armadarez.
Here.
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Present.
Councilmember Marx.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
And Mayor Blankley.
Here.
The posting of the agenda was done on Thursday, March 31st at 7:10 p.m.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to ask Andy to read aloud the statement about going into closed session.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Paragraph 2 of Subdivision D and Paragraph 3 of Subdivision E of Government Code Section 54956.9 and Gilroy City Code Section 17A113B, two cases as defendant based upon claims filed by Jesse Sanchez Jr. and Daniel Zaniga. And I now advise you as city attorney pursuant to the OGO that discussing these matters in closed session, in open session, excuse me, would likely and unavoidably prejudice the position of the city and therefore advise you to assert the attorney-client privilege and go into closed session. The next item would be to receive public comment on this matter.
All right, thank you. I don't know if I should have announced the time as 6:01 when he read that. And I'd like to open the public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on these items?
I did not receive any speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then with that, our closed public comment. And I'd like to ask if anyone here would like to make a statement?
Yes, I will be recusing myself from the agenda at this time. And how will I be noticed when you open again?
We'll come back in.
Yeah, we'll come back into this room and make a public comment.
Oh, you're gonna leave the room?
Yes.
The council's going to leave the room for a closed session, and then we'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll move to the administrative conference room.
Well, we need to take a vote.
Oh, sorry.
We need to take a vote in open session to go into closed session.
All right, it's all of us?
No, you do not.
Six.
6:01 to go into closed session.
Thank you.
And in closed session, you do not need to take another vote to stay in for this kind of closed session.
Okay, I'd like to adjourn back to open session. There is no reportable action from the closed session. And the time is 7:06. And we will move on to calling to order Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Loromanios, will you lead us in the pledge?
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, an invocation by Pastor Trevor, yeah, there he is. Trevor Van Laar of Gilroy Presbyterian Church, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Now, thanks for joining in a moment of silence. Father in heaven, I'm so grateful today to be in a country where we can convene freely. We are not at war, we struggle just to maintain peace. So grateful for those who have come to aid, those who need that. Think about those people right now, our local area, Sacramento, now receiving, the other state losing a loved one with shootings and violence. Father, we also know that well, good father, I offer up our heartfelt feelings of condolence, pain, suffering, Father, a grief within us well. I pray that as we continue to be a city, in this South County of Santa Clara, that you will give us wisdom and courage, help us to be wise in the things we do about those around us. And thank you, probably thank your name, Amen.
Amen, thank you. All right. Orders of the day, we have none. Employee introductions, we have one. Police Chief Espinoza.
Captain, here, I'm from the county of Colorado. Happy anniversary for you, Christian, for all of San Diego, for you, Chris, you're here. She was hired on the 28th of March. Christina comes to us from the Santa Cruz Regional Model One Center, which has spent almost nine years of its public service. She is rather in the dispatch cavity in the 2011. And at Santa Cruz, she received her medical, emergency medical dispatch certification, which awarded her the opportunity to call and care service to the public with emergency medical needs and disabilities. And for her time, she enjoys exercising, snowboarding, hiking, reading, and competing in baseball. Please help me to welcome her, Christina.
Thank you, welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to ceremonial items, we have a proclamation in support of the Ukraine. This is, whereas on February 24th, 2022, a massive military assault was launched by the Russian government on the sovereign nation of Ukraine. And whereas the continuing assault has been met by the strong resistance of the Ukrainian military, joined by armed civilians. And whereas the city of Gilroy condemns the violent invasion by Russia and stands in solidarity with the people of Ukraine in the face of this unprovoked assault on their country, their freedom, and their lives. And whereas Russian attacks on non-military residential areas of Ukraine cities have forced the evacuation of millions of civilians to neighboring countries. And whereas the city of Gilroy urges the safe evacuation of Ukrainians. Now therefore, I, Mary Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on this fourth day of April, 2022, along with my colleagues on the city council, join other local governments across Santa Clara County, across California, and the United States of America in condemning Russia's aggression and commending the people of Ukraine for their strength, courage, and bravery. Okay? Item six, presentations to the council. This is the time on the agenda for anyone to speak on something not on the agenda. Ty, do we have anybody who wants to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one speaker card from Mr. Alan Espinoza.
Okay. Yes, please, please come on up. Sorry, I keep forgetting to announce the beginning for people who want to speak to sit up front, so we, so you're right there.
Oh, Madam Mayor, um, Councilmember, um, I understand, well, I have been wanting to talk to you for a while, so I don't know if the procedure is, I don't know. But, um, I understand you guys work for me, so, um, I don't know who or how, but, um, wife and I just bought a home here in Gilroy. Um, don't say congratulations yet. It happened to be one of the tiny homes that the council recommended to whatever their amendment or rules or regulations of the city of Gilroy were or are to allow such things, um, there. And, um, there's been some issues, we've only been there maybe 35 days, and certain issues, and, you know, I don't know if Gilroy has control over, um, that area or that park, if you will, and I just wanted to find out, you know, who I can speak to here, or who was in charge of something like that. It's like, I mean, my parents made, definitely, you know, didn't have to move mountains to get in here, but, um, you know, I felt something was, you know, right, and I didn't know where to turn, so this is where I go, and hopefully, at least one of you could, you know, I know one of you here has got his phone calls and texts from me, um, but, uh, you know, this is where I'm at, and, you know, or what can you do for us, Madam Mayor?
Okay, we'll put you in touch with the right person. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers?
There are no other speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, moving on to reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Armandares.
No report.
Councilmember Marks.
No report.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. Um, let's start with, uh, California Welcome Center Visit Gilroy. Walk-in visitors to the California Welcome Center in the month of February continued to increase significantly over prior to the same year. Fiscal year '21 and '22, California Welcome Center Gilroy staff have welcomed over 10,000 visitors to our community. In addition, retail sales are tracking at over 125% over budget to date. Also encouraging to see 49 international visitors stop to the California Welcome Center during the month of February, including eight from Australia and seven from Brazil. During the month of February, 739 visitors viewed the camping in and around Gilroy blog post on the Visit Gilroy website. Our unique blog visitors to the website continue to grow due to the new blog features featured on the site and promoted through our social media campaigns. There was also two other ones that had to do with Bay Area hiking trails and dog-friendly restaurants and the Arts Are Alive in Gilroy. Hotel page views on the Visit Gilroy website also continue to grow this fiscal year over 9,400 page views year-to-date, contrasted to 1,450 during the same time of the period last year. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, as a follow-up to the successful adoption of the all-electric and electric-preferred REACH codes in 2019, staff presented the plan for 2022 building code cycle. REACH codes are local amendments to the state building code, and most cities in Santa Clara County have adopted varying levels of REACH codes that state a preference for all-electric and electric-ready new construction. These codes will expire on 12/31/2022 unless renewed by council vote and as part of the 2022 state building code update process. For this year's initiative, SBC will again offer our municipal staff technical resources to evaluate energy code amendments, municipal ordinance amendments, and zoning code amendments for EV charging. Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors voted to enter into a contract for 50 megawatts, 400 megawatt gold for the Gold Line project, which is for long-duration energy storage project in collaboration with five other CCAs. The SBC also received a clean audit report for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And lastly, attended the kickoff meeting for a $2.5 million, three-year County Public Health Caltrans Active Transportation Grant that's focused here in East Gilroy with a goal of promoting safe routes to community hubs. Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, my condolences and prayers to the victims and their families in Sacramento. I have an update and summary of the ad hoc committee meeting for the gourmet alley in downtown that we recently voted to create. Our first meeting was held on March 22nd. In attendance were Councilmember Tovar, myself, obviously, Armandares, and Ms. Marks, as well as Mr. Jimmy Forbeson. as well as, uh, Mr. Jimmy Forbes and Corinne Decker. At that meeting, I, uh, Councilmember Tovar was elected chair of the committee, and Councilmember Marks was elected vice chair. The initial meeting was focused on developing a work plan that addresses the areas of greatest needs in our downtown. The committee will get input and feedback from the committee and stakeholders to direct the committee's, um, efforts. In addition, we are planning on possibly hosting town hall meetings or perhaps conducting a survey to get input from the community about what they want to see in terms of development downtown. Staff will also develop talking points to align the narrative around what the grant award can fund. The committee is also working on reviewing the downtown specific plan to gain a better understanding of how much of a plan has been executed to date and what still remains unfinished and what updates might, might look like. In addition, uh, best practices policies for addressing vacancies. The committee briefly discussed the po, discussed the problem of vacancies and staff will, was directed to gather information on codes and ordinance that other cities have adopted to deal with problems of vacancy in their downtown. Interest was also expressed in continuing to apply and hopefully secure more grants for downtown, and staff will continue to work, um, to identify grants that could help fund public arts, uh, murals, and a community center, facades, improvements, and other projects that might add development. And in our next, uh, committee meeting is scheduled for March nineteenth. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember LaRomenos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, no official report, but I will say, um, following up on something that was, uh, shared by Councilmember Hilton, um, I was actually at an event this afternoon at Santa Clara University with some visiting entrepreneurs from Bavaria in Germany. And when they found out I was from Gilroy, they mentioned two things, one, the garlic, but two, the outlets. So clearly, our, our outlets, uh, outreach is doing some good work.
They didn't tell you the mayor's an alumni either?
I, next time I go, I'll let them know.
I too have no formal report, but I do want to say for those wondering if I'm ever going to give a State of the City this year, the answer is yes, I will. It hasn't happened yet. Okay, future council initiated items?
I have one.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
I would like to put on the agenda the Sergeant Ranch proposal that is asking for gravel and sand mining for the next thirty years, which includes the destroying of three hillsides on that property. The draft EIR is set to be released on April fourteenth for community members to comment over the next thirty to sixty days. After that time period, a final copy will be sent to the Santa Clara County Planning Commission, and then on to the Board of Supervisors for a final vote. With the cities of Morgan Hill, Santa Cruz, and Santa Clara, plus Green Foothills and the Alma Mutsen Tribal Band, all in opposition of this proposal, I feel the council needs to take a stand one way or the other, no later, and I know this is a crunch timeline, but with this EIR coming out so quickly, and the review is very quick, no later than our first council meeting in May, due to the time constraints, if we want to comment on the EIR since this property sits in Gilroy's backyard. So Jimmy, I don't know, I mean, I guess staff wouldn't have to do a real lengthy report, but we really do need to take a stand one way or the other. And give a recommendation.
So you need...
I'm not sure.
You need three other council members to agree with you.
Yeah, I'm all in, however you want to, however you want to do it.
Yeah, four.
It sounds like you have best practices in other cities.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so I do see four thumbs up, so.
Actually, more than that, Mayor.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, no, I don't under, I'm just not sure what, do you have enough direction to know how to bring this back? Because I, I'm not exactly clear.
I, I'm going to assume that you want council to take a position. I don't know that we would be in a position in that quick of a timeframe to give a recommendation, so I, I would, I, we can bring something back to you, but, uh, when looking at those things, it, it may take longer than what you might think, because we have no history. We have no idea what this is about, it's not our project.
I think what I want from council is if we need to make a resolution to, just something, if, first of all, we have to see how the council feels about it. If they oppose the project, then we need to make a resolution that we can send to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors as Gilroy's recommendation. So, I, I, I don't know what to suggest as far as staff is concerned.
No, right, maybe nothing for staff, maybe this should just be something that comes on the agenda for, within the next two meetings, this is new, two-meeting cycle. So we'll make sure it gets on the agenda, and it's up to each council member to do their own homework, to decide if you're going to take a position for or against.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, can we get a, a report from Jimmy? Just, uh, in your administrator's report, short, uh, what's going on with Kohansi and Monterey Street? Uh, you know, it's an entryway to our city, and it really looks pretty bad.
Is that just okay to just do?
Yes, I, I can give an update on that condition and the maintenance schedule, things like that, no problem.
All right, then. We good? All right, moving on to item eight, which is the consent calendar. Is there any item under consent that anyone wishes to pull? Okay, then I'd like to open public comment on this. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, then I'll close public comment and ask for a roll call vote, or a motion, I guess is what I need first.
Second? We do, yeah, we will need a roll call vote.
Yeah, so, motion is made by Councilmember Bracco, and seconded by Councilmember LaRomenos. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRomenos.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, bits and proposals, we have none. Public hearings, we have one. Public hea, public hearing to establish a list of properties subject to the weed abatement program and adoption of a resolution authorizing the fire chief to abate the nuisance arising out of weeds growing and refuse accumulating upon property in the city of Gilroy pursuant to section twelve point five-one of the Gilroy Code. I'd like to first ask, uh, any council members to disclose any ex parte communications that, uh, they may have had. So I'm just going to go down the line, does anybody have anything to disclose? No, 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 and no. All right, thank you. Then staff report, Jonathan Crick, or, no. Chief, Chief Wyatt, okay? Um, so I'm, okay, go ahead, yeah, staff report first.
So, Madam Mayor, and, um, council, uh, just, uh, just a reminder, this is a, uh, adoption of a resolution by the council.
Is this okay? Yes. All right, sorry about that. So, uh, this is an adoption, um, of a resolution by the council and the city of Gilroy authorizing the fire chief to abate the nuisance arising out of weeds growing and refuse, um, accumulating upon properties in the city of Gilroy pursuant to section twelve point five-one of the, uh, city, uh, Gilroy City Code. So, uh, just real quick, back in, um, January of this year, the council adopted, uh, weed abatement resolution number, uh, two thousand and twenty-two zero four, declaring weeds and refuse a, uh, as a public nuisance. Uh, this, uh, annual, uh, process complies with both the city code and the state health and safety code that require that prior to authorizing the abatement of a lot, the city hold a public hearing of the subject properties, and that's what we're doing today. Um, I've got both, um, uh, Jonathan Crick and also a representative, uh, from the, uh, county, and, uh, they can answer your questions specifically regarding this, uh, process. And so Jonathan, did you want to add anything real quick?
Not really, actually, it's cut the weeds.
Cut the weeds?
That's right. Thank you. I love to the point and clear. Okay. All right, so, council, does anybody have questions of chief before I go to, uh, the public? Okay, thank you. Then with that, I'd like to open the public hearing at seven twenty-six.
No.
Uh, PM, and ask if we have any members of the public who'd like to speak.
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, then I'll close it at also seven twenty-six. And, uh, looking for possible action then, council, to adopt a resolution authorizing the fire chief to abate the nuisance.
So moved.
All right, moved by Councilmember Tovar.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilton, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRomenos.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, thank you, that passes unanimously. Uh, item twelve, unfinished business, appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees with open vacancies. We aren't going to have a staff report on this, uh, I'll just go to public comment and then go to possible action because we had the interviews, uh, for this last, last time. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak on this?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, then I'll close public comment period and see if anybody would, would like to make a motion to appoint Sergio Patterson. He was our applicant last, last meeting.
I'll second.
As our Parks and Recreation Commissioner for the term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And that motion was made by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Marks. Digital voting, okay. It has me as the mover, but.
No worries, I can fix that any minute.
All right, and that passed unanimously, congratulations, Sergio, thank you for applying. Item thirteen, introduction of new business. Proposed Gilroy Police Department policy for the use of military equipment in accordance with Assembly Bill four eighty-one. And Captain Luke Powell, I think will be giving this report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I am Luke Powell, the operations captain with the Gilroy Police Department. I'm here tonight to provide insight into Assembly Bill four eight-one and seek direction to implement the city's military equipment use policy as prescribed by Assembly Bill four eight-one. On September thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, Governor Newsom signed into law Assembly Bill four eight-one, which requires a law enforcement agency to obtain approval from their governing body via adopting a military equipment use policy by ordinance before funding, acquiring, or using military equipment. This includes the continued use of pre-existing equipment, which the new law has now categorized as military equipment. The stated goal of this bill, the public has a right to know about any funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment. Agencies desiring to continue to use certain pieces of equipment must start the approval process by May first, two thousand and twenty-two, and the process must conclude within a hundred and eighty days. The term military equipment is defined in Government Code Section seventy seventy, and in fact, does not necessarily indicate equipment that has been used by the military. The use of the term military equipment may cause confusion because there are a good number of pieces of equipment on our inventory list that is not and has never been used by the military. It may clarify any misunderstanding by describing this law as more of a transparency requirement. Pursuant to Assembly Bill four eight-one, items deemed to be military equipment include, but are not limited to, unmanned aerial or ground vehicles, armored vehicles, command and control vehicles, chemical munitions, and pepper balls, less lethal shotguns, less lethal forty-millimeter projectile launchers, long-range acoustic devices, specialized firearms and munitions, and diversionary devices. Government Code Section seventy seventy has fifteen categories of equipment that now are considered military equipment. The Gilroy Police Department has equipment that meets the criteria of six of the fifteen categories. A detailed equipment inventory list has been provided to you in your packets and is also available for public viewing on the police department's website. This document is titled detachment one A, Policy seventy, I'm sorry, Policy seven zero eight point four, Military Equipment Inventory. Tonight, I will highlight only six categories of equipment the Gilroy Police Department has in our inventory. Those six categories are, category one, unmanned remotely piloted power, uh, powered aerial or ground vehicles. The Gilroy Police Department has four drones and three robots that meet these requirements. Category three, high-mobility, multipurpose wheeled vehicles, two and one-half-ton trucks, five-ton trucks, or wheeled vehicles that have a breaching or entry apparatus attachment. The Gilroy Police Department shares an armored rescue vehicle with Santa Clara County and the city of Morgan Hill. This vehicle can be configured with a breaching apparatus attachment. The breaching apparatus attachment meets these reporting requirements. Category five, command and control vehicles that are either built or modified to facilitate the operational control and direction of public safety units. The Gilroy Police Department shares both a mobile command vehicle and a hostage negotiation team van with the city of Morgan Hill. Both of these vehicles meet these reporting requirements. Category ten, specialized firearms and ammunition of less than fifty caliber, including firearms and accessories identified as assault weapons in Penal Code Section thirty-five-ten and thirty-five-fifteen, with the exception of standard-issued firearms. The Gilroy Police Department has thirty-five rifles that come in five different configurations that are not standard issued to all police officers, but are utilized by our SWAT team only. These rifles fall within these reporting requirements. Category twelve, noise flash diversionary devices and explosive breaching tools, munitions containing tear gas and pepper balls, excluding service-issued handheld pepper spread. The Gilroy Police Department possesses two forty-fil, forty-millimeter launching cups which are fixed to the end of a shotgun, fifty total diversionary devices that come in two different variants, one hundred total chemical agents and smoke canisters in seven different variants, pepper ball launchers, and one thousand live projectiles and one thousand inert projectiles. Lastly, category fourteen, kinetic energy weapons and munitions. The Gilroy Police Department possesses eight forty-millimeter less lethal launchers and fifty forty-millimeter foam projectiles, ten less lethal shotguns, and one hundred and fifty beanbag projectiles. The Gilroy Police Department strives to provide the highest quality of service to the community we serve. We are committed to using the best practices and contemporary equipment to enhance our ability to provide public safety. All the equipment listed in the provided military equipment inventory has been employed by the Gilroy Police Department and law enforcement agencies across the country for years to enhance the safety of community and law enforcement members. All these essential items enable us to provide the highest quality of service and provide police officers with the ability to safely resolve volatile situations and critical incidents that potentially would become lethal force encounters in their absence. None of these items are newly acquired and all have been in use long before the implementation of Assembly Bill four eight-one. In the interest of transparency, AB four eight-one opens figuratively closed doors to equipment employed by law enforcement agencies statewide and defines a clear legal obligation for future acquisitions, and any item deemed military equipment will require a public meeting, policy update, and council approval. Included in your council agenda packet and posted on the police department's website for public viewing is proposed draft policy seven zero eight. Draft policy seven zero eight meets all requirements of Assembly Bill four eight-one. To include the designation of a military equipment coordinator, the military equipment inventory currently utilized by Gilroy Police Department to include each item's description, purpose, authorized use, expected lifespan, and fiscal impact. The approval process and legal requirements, coordination with other jurisdiction... The approval process and legal requirements, coordination with other jurisdiction, use of military equipment in exigent circumstances, and annual reporting requirements to include the use of military equipment, complaints received, internal audits, or violations of Gilroy Policy Section 708, and fiscal impacts. Lastly, community engagement to include a process for members of the public to file complaints, concerns, or submit questions. For many years, the Gilroy Police Department has a means to submit compliments, questions, and complaints. This policy section reiterates that already existing process. On this slide, I have listed the steps and a proposed timeline to comply with Assembly Bill 481. Draft a policy regarding the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment. I spent the past few weeks compiling this data and authored the draft policy 708, which is in your packet. Post-draft policy 708 on the police department's website 30 days prior to a public hearing. This was completed on March 25th. Bring draft policy 708 to council for discussion and direction. That's why I'm here tonight. Host a public community engagement meeting within 30 days of submitting and publicizing draft policy 708. This will take place this Thursday, April 7th, at the Gilroy Police Department in the community room from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. Draft policy, I'm sorry, draft and ordinance adopting draft policy 708 that will take place between April 7th and April 28th. First reading and council introduction of the ordinance adopting draft policy 708, May 2nd. Second reading and adoption of the ordinance established by policy 708, May 16th. And finally, produce an annual report to include the use of military equipment, any complaints received, any internal audits, or violations of policy 708, and fiscal impacts. The annual report will begin May 2023. At this time, I'd like to field any questions regarding Assembly Bill 481 or draft policy 708.
Thank you. Okay, council, questions now, and so, Dion, you're in the queue. Go ahead.
Thank you, Captain. That was a really good report.
Thanks, sir.
Very detailed. The only thing I would like to see added is the purchase year of, of the equipment, you know, like the Bearcat and the motorhome and all that.
Yes, sir.
I think as a council member, it helps us to know what's coming up. You know, if it just says it's got a 20-year lifespan, you don't know when it's purchased, you don't really know. And also, I have one question on what exactly is a throwbot?
Throwbot, good question. So it is just that. We're not that creative in our titles for equipment, so it's a small robot that can be handheld and you could throw it into a doorway or window.
Thank you.
And then it comes alive?
It, it, we'll turn it on, then we throw it in, and then remotely operate it from there. Thank you. I should have clarified.
Any other question? I have one if no one else has any. Do we have our own SWAT team, or is that shared with Morgan Hill too?
So we do share a SWAT team with the city of Morgan Hill.
Okay, right, so, so the rifles, things that are for SWAT team are also shared with Morgan Hill?
Yes, if it was shared, I listed as a shared. There are certain things that each agency does provide their personnel.
Right. Okay. There are no other questions, then I'll go to public comment. Do we have any members of the public who would like to...
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one speaker card from Ron Kirkish.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and community. I am in full support of using and acquiring military equipment. The captain said that this equipment is useful to make it safer for the police personnel during times of activity. In fact, it's also very useful to protect the citizens themselves, and that's proven, that's a proven fact. I know there are some individuals that are, they don't even want SROs, and that's unfortunate. But in this case, we have a problem today. We've had several police, over, over 100 police officers killed in the line of duty over this last year. We had one shooting here where we almost lost a female police officer. Thank God she's alive, and then it hurt. We've had several shootings here in Gilroy. It's dangerous. A lot of these criminals have more firepower than our police do. So the least we can do is try to give them these equipment to protect them as they go into harm's way, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no others?
No others, Madam Mayor.
All right, then closing public comment and coming back to council. So the feedback we've got so far is just to add dates of items when they were purchased so that we have some idea of how old these things are. All right? No other direction being offered? So, it's not even a motion, it's just a, yeah.
Just direction.
Yeah, we don't, we don't actually need a motion.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that Captain is clear on, yeah, very good. All right, thank you, everybody. Very good. Okay, moving on to item 14, city administrators' reports. We have three items here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a little bit lengthy report, but before I start, I want you to notice the robot, not a throwbot, but a robot that we have right behind our city clerk, and that is some of the technology that we have purchased in order to get into this century. This broadcasted tonight on Facebook, and so this is kind of our baby steps in getting things out there in a different manner. So we're also on the web, city's website, but we're also on Facebook, and so the nice thing about this camera is that whoever speaks, the camera focuses on. And so it picks up the voice and moves around, and that's all I know about it. But other than that, just wanted to point that out in case anybody was wondering what that thing is. Okay, getting into my formal report, first of all, I wanted to give council an update. This was a council-initiated item to get information about pickleball in general. It certainly has been a growing sport and one that we've been working towards trying to facilitate some participation opportunities for those who like to play this sport. I'll give you a little bit of a background and give you, you know, where we're at today with this. Before COVID, the pickleball program in Gilroy was at Wheeler, it was indoors in the gymnasium, and during the COVID outbreak, it was moved to an outdoor location due to the restrictions on indoor sports, and it was moved out temporarily Les Anamos on tennis courts 5 and 6. When the restrictions were lifted, the, the Les Anamos courts were returned to their prior state, which was tennis-only facilities. So those six courts are, have been designated for tennis only, and they were returned to tennis only. The city also at that time resurfaced courts 5 and 6 at Les Anamos, repainting the tennis lines and, and doing some repairs. At that time, the city offered up a temporary opportunity for pickleball to be outdoors, and so we utilized Sunrise Park, and temporary lines were installed in December. And we decided to do a 30-day trial to see how things went. 30 days turned into 60 and into 90 because we received, I believe, only one complaint during that time, which is actually fewer complaints we received for other things happening at the park. So it was very successful. We were very encouraged that that, that activity could coincide with what's going on in that park, the noise wasn't too bad, and people were able to coexist. It's not to say that there's not a few dust-ups here and there about who, who's on the court or who gets to use it at what time, but that's pretty common for any kind of shared-use facility. So Sunrise has turned out to be quite successful, and now that it's being light at night, I expect that facility to get utilized day and night, you know, until it's dark by our pickleballers. So the drawback to Sunrise is that there are no lights or restroom, but for those of you who are familiar with Les Anamos, there's not always restrooms at Les Anamos due to vandalism, arson, you name it, of our bathrooms and porta-potties. So unfortunately, that's a reality of just having a bathroom in a city property nowadays is that it's under attack. And so I certainly sympathize with the pickleballers out at Sunrise, but a bathroom is, is not always guaranteed anymore, even when we do. But that's, those are general concerns that the pickleballers have. So we've, we've offered them up some things to look at going long-term. Everybody wants somewhere to play regardless of what activity they have, but we have looked at El Roble as a possible, a potential pickleball, you know, home for them. We've also encouraged them to have discussions with GAVALON and GSUD for use of some of their facilities that aren't being utilized by tennis players or, or other activities. So we have put that back on, on them to keep looking at ideas and keep working with us to come to the table and, and see what can be done. So I want to, having said that, I want to relay to you what the city staff position is right now. These things could change, and they could be modified, but this is how we've really approached most sports or most activities that we've been asked by community members to help provide a place for them to play. For pickleball right now, we continue to keep Les Anamos tennis-only. We've made no changes and no recommendations to change that. But to continue to utilize Sunrise. We've encouraged them to fundraise, build support for facility, which is a very consistent message with what we've done with a lot of other activities. And for example, we've talked to the BMX folks, we've had a gentleman who runs the footsal program, we've had disc golfers, and we've had other groups that would love the city to provide them recreational facilities for their activity. And we give them all the same advice. The best way is to get organized, start doing some fundraising, and get us to the table so then we have the opportunity to discuss how we go forward. But none of these activities, including ones I've already mentioned, are included in the city's capital improvement program, and neither is pickleball at this time. So that is where staff is at with pickleball, and, and it's growing, and we see other communities having similar discussions and looking at opportunities, but for now, we are focused and we have relayed that position to them. So that does conclude my report. I could answer any questions you'd like to have about pickleball, but certainly, we're trying to treat them like every other sport or new activity that comes up and try to be cooperative, but also knowing we have limited space and facilities and resources to help them.
Can I ask you a question? Well, thank you for that report. In regards to, you said possible sites, El Roble and obviously GSUD and GAVLAN College, but the El Roble site, is that something that's on the table or? And in addition to that, you talked about that pickleball's not part of the capital improvement plan. Are we giving any funds to any other activities, any other groups?
So to answer your first question, if you were to ask me personally, I think El Roble is the ideal location. One, because it has an existing court that can't be used by anybody. You can't skateboard in it, you can't play tennis, it's horrible. And we have a preliminary estimate of about $80,000 to $100,000 it would take to convert that, but it is a neighborhood park, so it's not used to a lot of noise and things like that, but it's certainly what I believe is probably a good location to look at. Sunrise continues to be a joint-use facility between tennis and pickleball, so we'd certainly continue to use that. The second part is, do we give CIP funds to other programs? And to answer your question, most likely no.
Okay.
We do support athletic fields in the community with use of our park, you know, operation funds, so you go out to Christmas Hill Park and you look at the ball fields, the city maintains those through a contractor, and same thing with the sports park. But as for capital improvement, I would say we have not allocated much to any other activity as well.
Okay, and then just follow-up in regards to, you mentioned Sunrise does not have a restroom that can be utilized basically for, during the daytime, is there a possible way of us putting a porta-potty or something out there? And in addition to, to that, is we talked about having them organize and fundraising, you'd mentioned the, the sum of $80,000 to $100,000, is that what they should be looking at?
Well, you know, I wouldn't say that's the goal number, but I said any time you bring money to the table, it certainly makes people have a different conversation with you, and so we, we've encouraged them. One, there are different groups of pickleballers in town. The morning group, the evening group, and so to get them organized, kind of like, everybody knows who the tennis club is, they know who the organization is, they know the hierarchy. I think that's the model for good, you know, organization and getting some things done. We've encouraged them to kind of model that.
No, no, again, I thank you, and thank you to the city for being proactive. I actually took it upon myself to learn how to play pickleball. I'm not very good, but it's fun.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaris, you have a question?
Yeah, Jimmy, in regards to El Roble Park and pickleball, do you mean using the existing tennis courts there or building something additional?
Yeah, we would demolish the existing tennis courts and redo them and line them for pickleball only, but we have no plans to do that, that's just the idea.
And they're not frequently-used tennis courts?
No, if you, I actually went out there and I wouldn't use it for anything other than nothing.
A picnic?
Yeah.
Put a blanket down, have a picnic?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They're a state of disarray, disrepair.
Okay. Your next item?
All right, my next item is on the agenda as 2021 Tree City, it should be 2020 Tree City Award. I want to take an opportunity to recognize the city's efforts in collaboration with the Arbor Day Foundation. The city of Gilroy was awarded Tree City USA for 2021, and there's a few things that the city has to do to, in order to achieve that recognition, and they have to have a tree board or department with an arborist, and the city does have an arborist. We have to have a tree care ordinance, a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita, and then an annual Arbor Day observation and proclamation. And the benefits of trees are well-known, shade, you know, thriving urban forest, it reduces sounds of traffic, and it actually increases property values. So it's a very good thing for the city to receive this award. I did want to give special thanks to maintenance worker John Greer, Bill Avila, who's the streets and forestry supervisor, Bill Headley, who's the parks and landscape supervisor, and Darryl Jordan, who's the PW director. And those of you who have been at an Arbor Day event, we did, recently did one out at the municipal golf course. We've done some other ones in other areas, know that it's, it's a lot of fun, it's nice to plant trees, and, and we're recognized for the amount of work we've done in that area. So I want to congratulate everybody and congratulate Gilroy on that. And then my last item...
Can I have it?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there a way, there's, out on the freeway, we have two Tree City sign recognition that we are a Tree City USA, they haven't been updated for several years, they're, they've been at 36 years for a long time. Is there a way that maybe we can get a sticker from them to either update that sign, or if they have a new sign, and maybe even sprinkle a couple more signs in some of our parks or, or maybe places where we've done the Arbor Day celebrations? I think it's a, it's a benefit, like you said, to be able to have that, and I'm sure signs are not that, that expensive. Thanks.
And, and the last item I have for you this evening is an update from Santa Clara Valley Water District or Valley Water. They go through an annual process to have their rates evaluated, and as most communities in the Bay Area or county are experiencing a little bit of sticker shock that the cost of water is going up significantly. And there are two, there's several public meetings that are being held by the Valley Water, and one in particular should note for Gilroians is April 14th. It's a Zoom meeting at 6 o'clock for the open house, where the water district will present projects and things that are going on in their world, and then at 7 o'clock is the public hearing, which they are required to have for public input on the rate increases. The rate increase that is being proposed at this point is about 5.2% for those who use, you know, municipal water for most of us, and then there are increases for the agricultural production, which is expected to be 8% increase in those rates. That is not really a surprise to many of us as getting water is getting harder, and I bring this up to you because the city is currently initiating a rate study for our own charges, and we will have to pass these, these increases along to our customers. We've not had a rate increase or adjustment in several years, and I'm proud of that, but at the end of the day, when we're seeing almost double-digit increases from our supplier, we only have one way to, to do that. So that'll be on the council agenda, it's in our work plan, and will be coming up, but I do encourage the public to get involved with Valley Water, to learn about conservation efforts, and to also understand the groundwater production charges that we all pay. So that is April 14th. With that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 15, city attorneys' reports.
I have no report, but I guess I can announce a closed session.
Please.
All right, item 16 is a closed-session conference with labor negotiator, collective bargaining units pursuant to Gilroy Code, excuse me, Government Code 54957.6 and Gilroy Code 17A114. Collective bargaining units are ASME Local 101, General and Supervisory, representing employees affiliated with ASME, Local 101, Local 2805, IAFF Fire Unit representing Gilroy firefighters, Gilroy Management Association representing mid-management employees, unrepresented exempt employees, confidential department heads and council-appointed, unrepresented confidential non-exempt employees, part-time temporary seasonal employees, hourly and exempt. City negotiator Jimmy Forbes and Leanne McPhillips. Anticipated issues are wages, hours, benefits, working conditions, memorandums of understanding, city of Gilroy and Gilroy firefighters, Local 2805, city of Gilroy and ASME Local 101, General and Supervisory Units, city of Gilroy and Gilroy Management Association, GMA. So it's appropriate to receive public comment, and then the council should not... So, it's appropriate to receive public comment, and then the council should not take a vote to go into closed session, but once in closed session, take a vote, and that's a reportable action when you emerge.
All right, thank you. The time is 7:56 p.m., and I'll open the public comment.
There are no public comments, Madam Mayor.
All right, then I'll close the public comment, and now we'll wait until everything's turned off.
Correct.
Go ahead and take a five-minute, I guess, a five-minute recess, everybody.